There is nothing to report out, so that is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any objections? See none, so move. All right, thank you, and first I want to say good evening to everyone. This point I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park City Council Regular Meeting. Today's August the 15th, 2018, the time is 7:05. I'd like to open up the Housing Authority and the Finance Authority concurrent. All righty. And we'll also have, at this point, Pastor Jackson, that's her name is here. Oh, good, Pastor Jackson is present, so this one I'd like to have him lead us in an invocation, followed by the flags. So Pastor Jackson, we wish you could come up to the front. I'll ask all those that are able to stand to please do so at this time. Thank you.
Father, we come before you in the name of the Lord. You said to acknowledge you in all of our ways, and you would direct our path. Baldwin Park needs your divine direction, Father, and needs your mighty hand upon Baldwin Park. Put your hand upon our businesses, Lord God, that it may grow and prosper, Lord God. Put your hand upon our police department and fire department, Lord, and I just bless the fire department that's been out there working diligently with all these fires that have been coming about, Father, and our police department that are roaming the streets, Lord God, to keep the city safe, keep them safe as well as the city being safe. Our school district, Lord God, that our children are there, they're growing, and subject to all kind of elements come before them. Keep them safe, Lord God, keep them safe from the gangs, keep them safe from drugs, Lord God, and keep their mind alert and willingness to learn, Father. And so we give you praise, Lord God, and we give you your thanksgiving for what you're doing here in Baldwin Park. Continue to work, and our government, our soldiers, we just need you all around the world and right here in Baldwin Park. In the name of the Lord, we pray, amen.
Amen, and thank you very much. At this point, we'll face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America, to the republic which stands, my nation under God, indivisible, under the great Jesus Christ.
All right. Thank you very much. Real quick, I want to acknowledge the individuals that are here this evening as well, and at this point, we're going to take roll call. So we're going to have our city treasurer, Maria Contreras, and Alejandra Avila. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos y bienvenidos.
Yep.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
She should be here shortly.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Present.
Vice Mayor Pacheco?
Present.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present, thank you very much, sorry about that, all right. Well, also welcome Captain Bartolome, who is the acting chief while Chief Kaler is out on vacation. All right, so at this point, we don't have any presentations, but, oh, we do have one? Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, councilman, vice mayor.
I want to say a couple, well, I guess, after the...
Sure.
Go ahead. Well, I just want to say, I wanted to just congratulate all those. There's an election coming up in November, so congratulations to all those that are running for city council, mayor, and city clerk, city treasurer. But one of the hardest races that was won this time was for the city treasurer.
Yeah.
She worked really hard. She took out all her opponent, all her opponents before, before there were even an election. She scared them off. So congratulations, Maria Contreras.
Thank you.
A round of applause, because you're, in November, you'll be the...
Her support.
So thank, you're welcome. Actually, she, she had no opponents in her election, so obviously she'll be the winner in November.
All right.
Good job, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Airman, if you work as well.
Yes, yes, councilman.
Real quickly, I just want to thank our Parks and Recreation, our staff. We had such a lovely street fair with our family and community coming together, and I want to particularly make sure that they know, because I believe it was 105 degrees out that day, and they were out since 5:00 in the morning putting this together. It was very successful. I don't know if many of you went. It was extremely successful, but that was due to the hard work of your staff, so please make sure that they rec, you know, that we commend them for the great work that they did. It was, like I said, particularly hot that day. I also want to thank our police department. They had also a very wonderful national night out. If you haven't been to our national night out, it really is incredible to see the number of people they bring out. I believe there was like 8,000 backpacks given away, pencils, papers for all the kids returning back to school, and we know we have a lot of need in our community. So also, please tell your staff, all the police department, thank you so much for all the work that you did. It was incredible. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Susan Rubio. Anyone else? Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Mayor, I'd like to thank Assemblymember Blanca Rubio for the flag that she presented to the Baldwin Park Women's Club. Our flag had flown for years, but our tree was overgrown, and so it tore the flag, and it had to be brought down, and we were trying to figure out how to get another flag, and Assemblymember Rubio presented a flag, which you were there, Mayor, and a lot of...
Thank you, yes, thank you very much. We'll thank her.
And so after some calls and so forth, we've got the flag, so it's very nice. We will, we will fly it proudly.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to close in memory of a former planning commissioner, Raúl Reyes. He passed away...
Oh, no way.
About three weeks ago.
Oh, wow.
So I know he served with you and Al when you were planning commissioners.
Yes, I spoke to him last, I saw him, I actually spoke to him, was in February. Wow.
Had an aneurysm, and the doctor said that he had never, ever, ever seen such a big aneurysm.
So that's three weeks ago?
About three weeks ago. And he did leave his little twins, small children behind.
Yeah, they had very small little children, wow.
I think he had a stroke first and then aneurysm, so there was just a lot of issues, but our condolences goes to his family and his little ones. He had three little ones.
Let's send a, let's send a letter to him on behalf of the city of Baldwin Park, because he contributed immensely as a planning commissioner. I met him back in 1992. All right.
But Mayor, I would, I would also like to close in memory of Carolyn Davis, longtime resident, was 96 years old, longtime resident of Baldwin Park, and she will be missed. She was active when she could with the seniors, but has been a resident of Baldwin Park for a long time.
Thank you, thank you. We'll close on behalf of those two individuals, part of the city of Baldwin Park. All right, we do have the presentation, which is the Metro Next Gen Bus Study, so do the...
Good evening, I'm Conan Chung from LA Metro. Head up the Service Planning and Scheduling Department. We do all the route planning, scheduling for the buses and the trains for Metro. Just to give you a quick overview, this is sort of a map of our service area as well as a lot of the routes here. I won't bore you with all the details, but we're basically the top third or second largest bus company in the country. In terms of rail, we're also expanding with the passage of Measure R and M. We continue to expand our rail system. However, over the past 25 years, we really haven't taken a comprehensive look at our bus network. And again, that, that's a large network. It carries about 70% of our ridership every day. We carry about 900,000 boardings a day. As you can see here, there's a lot of new people who's moved to LA County. There's a lot of new ways to get around, whether you're driving or you're taking transit, taking Uber lifts, or bike share and whatnot. And so we need to figure out how to better work with all of these different transportation options, as well as how to better serve people relative to how they travel, where they want to go today, and so forth. So really, in a nutshell, in terms of this slide here, what we're really showing you is that a lot of people in LA County have tried using transit. You can see here, only 16% of the people in LA County are non-riders. There's about 7% of the people in the county who are very frequent riders, but you can see a large percentage there, 55%, are infrequent riders. These are people who have tried transit maybe a couple times during the year, and how do we attract them to ride transit more often? In order to do that, we really need to know who they are, where they need to go, what they wanted, what they want in terms of their transportation choices and so forth. So we've been doing a lot of outreach to date. You can see all the different community events that we've been to, community meetings. We have an external working group. We work through our board. We have a lot of online engagement as well, so we're really trying to do the personal touch, more the traditional outreach, as well as the kind of next generation of outreach as it relates to web and social media and so forth. And in a nutshell, what we've heard from everyone, and in doing our surveys, is that no matter who you are out there, no matter how often you ride, or whether you ride or you don't ride, people want fast, frequent, and reliable service. First and foremost, that's what we need to provide for people to even consider using transit in the first place. Now, after that, you can see to the right-hand side, all of those criteria in the orange boxes, these are sort of what I call kind of customer experience items, you know, whether it's safety, security, you know, fares, comfort, things like that, that we need to provide for people to be able to feel attracted to using transit and, and be comfortable using transit. And depending on what type of person you are, who you are relative to those boxes, certain people gravitate to certain amenities, whereas other people gravitate to other ones. So with 7 million hours of service, it sounds like a lot of hours, but it doesn't give us enough hours to be fast, frequent, reliable for everyone, to all places, at all times of the day. So we really need to be prudent in terms of how we provide our resources out there. We're starting this study, we started about six months ago. It's the Next Gen Bus Study. We're really starting it with a, a very rigorous analytical background, but of course, as I showed you earlier, we have a huge public outreach component to it, because we can learn when and where people travel through the data, but we don't, we can't learn as to why they choose to use transit or not unless we go and talk to them and better understand what their story is. So our schedule, this is where we are in our process, we're about a third way through. It's an 18-month planning process. We're about, I think, six, seven months into it. We're crunching a lot of the data as we speak, and we'll be developing service concepts as we go along, and this entails trade-offs, where we give, you know, certain people will gain, certain people will, you know, perhaps lose some service if they're not using service a lot now. But those service concepts will be taken to our board for adoption in February or so, and then with that, which is kind of a high-level guidance as to, and service parameters, as to how we route and schedule our buses and our trains, we'll take that information and do all the detailed route planning. And we hope to start implementing this new bus network starting in July, December 2019. So with that, we're, we're asking everyone to engage with us through this process. We have a website right here. Again, we are more than welcome to come and talk to anyone who wants us to talk to them in more detail about any aspect of our study, but probably the first place to start is to get to our website and connect us, with us through there. So with that, that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmembers, have any questions? Yes, councilmember Cruz Baca? Yes.
I know that some of the questions that are asked sometimes, especially of some of our students that are riding metro or some of the public transportation to get to school, or to the local community colleges, will you be thinking of putting in Wi-Fi anytime in the near future?
Yeah, we actually started with our train system, so we have Wi-Fi out there, we have cellular out there. We're also putting Wi-Fi on our buses. We're putting new routers on the buses, which gives us not only Wi-Fi on those, but also much better real-time prediction as to when the buses show up.
So does that mean you're going to put up some type of a digital readout so that people know when you're arriving, or when the next bus is coming? Is that what we're looking at?
We have about 500 of those digital readouts throughout the network at our major, some of our major bus stops, but when you look at the county and the size of the area that we serve, we have about 15,500 bus stops, so it's difficult to have monitors at every one, and it's difficult to maintain. But as long as we have good information that can get pushed to your app on your phone, or to call in, if you want to call in and get text messages as to when your bus is going to arrive, we're going to be able to provide that accurate information so that you can access the data that way.
My concern, and the questions are from the, from the seniors, because a lot of them, if they have a cellphone, they don't know how to use an app. So my concern is, you know, for them to be able to see instead of standing out there for X amount of time, for them to know that another bus is coming in the next 20 minutes or whatever it is, so that that way, you know, they would, they would be able to either wait, or maybe they could go into some shelter or into a restaurant until the next bus comes along.
Yeah, and again, we have, we have the sort of displays at our major, some of our major transit stops, as well as all of our rail system stations, so they'll be able to access the information over there. But again, you know, it's difficult to cover the entire area with electronic, you know, message signs or, or monitors, but we do try to make sure that we accommodate as many people as we can.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just first want to say thank you for coming out tonight and giving us a presentation on, on this, and giving us a heads up, because it's very important. You know, our community relies on public transportation, and when I think about this study, I think about possible service cuts that could happen as you assess this. And our community is, is, you know, it's a hard-working community, not one to really come out to community meetings. So how will you be assessing, you know, just your, your routes and the success of routes? Is it going to be based on ridership, or what does that look like?
Yeah, as I showed you earlier, we've, we're sort of doing two major sort of data collection analysis tasks at one time. It's really number one, looking at who our markets are and where they want to go and come from. Traditionally, all we have is sort of census data that tells you population density, employment density. We look at, you know, household travel surveys, but they generally focus on work trips, employment trips. But nowadays, with the advent of, you know, cellphones and mobile devices, we were actually able to purchase cellphone data, location-based data. We have six months' worth of kind of your phone moving around from about 5 million phones that have touched LA County over the past six months. And these not only are phones that belong to people who live in LA County, but also they belong to the 50 million visitors that we get within LA County. So we're starting out with a large basis of data that tells us not only where people are going, whether you're using transit, or you're driving, or you're walking, or you're biking, but when you're traveling, and how far you're traveling, where you're going to, and for what trip purpose. So we're starting with that basis and really trying to tailor our services to where those markets are. So if there's a lot of traveling going on, and we look at our ridership information as sort of another second step of that, if we match up that, you know, this is a high, a population that has high ridership, and it also has high trip making, then we definitely want to prioritize those types of areas.
And will you be issuing a report that gives, you know, the analysis of, of that study?
Yeah, we'll have a report at the end of this whole process, but, you know, the, the primary, you know, task here or objective is to restructure our routes and our schedules. So all the data that we're collecting and we're analyzing, whether it's analyzing our existing system or learning about new markets, it's going to be rolled into our technical work when we actually do the route planning and, and scheduling. And what we're going to do is we're going to push out interactive displays and, and not necessarily written reports, because I personally don't like to read a huge, long report, but graphics and visual representations of, for example, how far can you go on this new network within five minutes, or 15 minutes, or 30 minutes? What's your access to opportunities relative to employment, to major regional attractions, and things like that? So hopefully, information that's a lot more relevant to people rather than reams of paper, so that people can understand how this new network will improve their, their traveling options, or, or if there are impacts. And if there are impacts, and definitely they would have the opportunity to let us know how they want us to, to, to start adjusting those changes.
Right, okay, so that makes sense. I mean, you know, the report that you, you just described, it makes a lot of sense for Metro and for its objectives. I'm thinking more about our residents and how they may be impacted, and so the latter part of your explanation, you know, that definitely speaks to, I think, my question. And so if we, that can be communicated to us, you know, should there be any cuts or any reductions, or if that can be communicated? Because in the past, we've had, you know, some, some cuts, and, and it hasn't always been explained or justified, or, you know, so it's, I don't really know the methodology of, of past cuts, so that would be really helpful.
Sure, and, and we're going to, every time we make major service changes, it goes through basically a six-month public hearing process. So within that process, we'll show what our recommended changes are, and our service councils, which the one in the San Gabriel Valley meets over at Division Nine, which is on Santa Anita, that council will be listening, looking at all the changes, and they'll also be hearing the public testimony and so forth, and directing us to make any changes that, that we should be making relative to the public input.
All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to ask any questions? If not, thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate that.
And we have some handouts here that maybe I'll leave.
Yeah, go ahead, we'll give them out to our city treasurer. Oh, okay, all right, so we could, if we could do that, I'd appreciate that. All right, before I open up the public hearing, I want to also just read something for the record, which is, as required by the government code, Section 54952.3. Members of the city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening, and each council member has paid additional stipend $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting, and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. All right, so at this point, see no further presentations. I'll go ahead and open up the public communication, so anyone wishing to speak, approximately three minutes. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, public, and employees. At the July 18 meeting, we're given an agenda that we're supposed to follow. Lo and behold, I'm following the agenda. We closed the regular meeting, no different than this one. We go to the Finance Authority Committee meeting. Because we adjourned the regular meeting, we proceed with the Finance Authority. We move on from the Finance Authority, we adjourned that, and move on to the Baldwin Park Housing Authority. People started to walk out. For some unknown reason, you decided to reopen the council meeting. It's already been adjourned, moved on to another session, another session. People had already, three-quarters of the people walked out. The action taken, I was told, that was an emergency. Nothing changed. It didn't go from whatever vote it was, because half of the, including the council members, they were walking out. Three-quarters of the public had already been out, and you said it had to be open because it was an emergency? It passed earlier, three to two. The last vote, did it pass for one? But it didn't change the outcome because it had already passed. So I feel, based on my experience of 27 years following parliamentary procedure and rubber rules of order, that you guys were out of order. I have no idea, but I have an idea why, but that's my own feeling, and I felt that you guys did not proceed with your regular meeting as you planned, as you posted it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Alcantara. All right, move along with public communication.
Hello, city council, Baldwin Park residents. You know, you people got to go to school again. Number one, where's all the money from the weed growers? I know, oh, they'll pay us sometime. You know, we're in debt. Think about it, you people up here, you... Mayor, am I speaking to the wall, or am I speaking to all you five people? You know better than doing other business while people are talking to you guys. Maybe that's why you don't listen. Right? Okay, let me get back to what... $55 million, you guys assume you owe your pension fund. I hope you go bankrupt, that way you don't get nothing. It's rude, but that's the world, the world rolls. You people have all this money that you're spending. This guy wants to put in a bunch of new roads and lanes, bicycle stuff. Where are you getting all this money? You're $55 million behind on a pension fund that you should be paying every time it's due. You don't do that. So what are you doing with all the money? Mr. Pacheco, what are you guys doing with all the money? Another one doesn't pay attention. When I speak, and everybody out here speaks, you people listen. All this paperwork you're reading, you're doing, do it tonight. Mr. Pacheco, you're a very rude person. Maybe you don't hear. Want me to tell you in Spanish? Buino, listen to us!
Excuse me.
That means donkey, listen to us. Anything else you want to hear, Mr. Pacheco? Also, we have the right to speak our opinion. This here is telling us we're in debt. We keep telling you to take care of business. You five people don't want to take care of business. You're too busy doing other things. You're tearing our city apart, Trump. You're doing it slowly but surely. The Treasury report. Mayor, you never let us tell you anything about the Treasury report. The Housing Authority, you skip over that like there's no goddamn paperwork to look at. I told you, I told the lawyer, you people aren't doing the Brown Act at all. You come here, you do whatever the hell you want, and then you move on. The Brown Act says that what you read, I need to read. Mayor, is that true? Does this read the same thing that you read? Ask your fellow public! You're so honest? Now we know you're not honest.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that.
My time's up, I know.
That's right.
Oh, by the way, you want some nice transit? Put in a monorail system.
Time's up, time's up, thank you very much.
It costs money, but you can get it done.
Appreciate that, thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, move along.
John Rios, resident. I'm going to need a translator. Doesn't matter whoever can translate from Spanish to English. How come that thing is running already?
Spanish to English?
Yeah.
One of the things I have seen in the city, and another thing that I've seen of people that are in power... They take advantage of the community. Well, we need to do as a community, as we say in Spanish, a bunch of rats. Baldwin Park is like a cheese, and you go get some. One thing that you do is after we finish talking, Mr. Pacheco starts saying that the attorney got this and the attorney got that, that has nothing to do with us. Ms. Garcia always says that we get the example from another city. We don't care about other cities like Maywood. We want... Yeah, I'm so sorry.
For everything to stay in house.
For everything to stay in house. Sorry about that. One of the things that I'm really embarrassed about is that Mr. Lozano runs again. He is the biggest rat of all. He is the biggest rat of all.
Y otras cosas que, que, que hace como un año tuvimos un accidente allí, un lado de mi casa, las luces se fueron.
Another thing is, we had an accident over there by my house a while back. The lights went out.
Yeah. Y todavía no la pueden componer, y ese es un año ya.
And to this date, they haven't fixed it, and it's been a year.
Una de las cosas que tenemos que mirar como comunidad es sacar toda esta gente que está mal, que está robando a la comunidad aquí de Baldwin Park.
What we need to do as a community is to take those that are wrong and that are robbing the community.
Es todo por ahorita. El otro meeting entonces les digo más.
That's all for now. I'll speak at the next meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Move along with public communication.
Good evening, council members. My name is Raquel Urias Lara. I'm here representing our street, which is Nolina, down by, close to Kaiser. We just would like to get on the agenda, basically, because everybody's at their wits ends due to one neighbor. Unfortunately, he's just drawing up blood pressure, blood pressure, sorry, blood pressures, giving everyone anxiety, and, basically, these are old-school people, so they don't know how to proceed with, you know, going forward. So, at this point, I think, basically, we just need to get on the agenda to go to, to be able to move forward with complaints. Do you need any other information from us, or?
I'm gonna have one of my Public Works Director will speak to you regarding that.
Very well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
I'm one of the residents of the Nolina Avenue. Basically, this particular neighbor that we have, we are, from my perspective, in my, my living, I'm tired, we're tired of his harassment. So, to this point, to my understanding, that for any, for any little noise that we make, he calls the police department. Obviously, the police department know who he is, and the only thing they, obviously, they recommend is either counsel him, or what's the steps that we could do. But, I mean, to this point, I'm tired, because I have kids. He has the tendency of taking pictures of everybody. So, to my, to my concern, I have no idea what kind of mind he has for him to be taking pictures of children. I don't know who he is, what kind of mentality he has, if he's a pedophile, a perverted person. I have no idea. So, I'm just concerned about that, too. I know that, once you're in the street, you're allowed to, you could video, you could video-record anybody or take pictures, but when it comes to children, I think it's concerning when it's about children, I'm taking pictures of, of anybody who, I mean, obviously, who you think it's, who's causing all this chaos in the same street of all, with all the neighbors. For any music that he does, any music that we hear, obviously, it's not even loud enough for the whole entire neighborhood to hear. He calls the police on us. So, any, any little, any little noise that he thinks, or any little noise that he makes, he calls the police on us. So, obviously, I mean, we're, I'll speak for myself, I am tired of his harassment, so I really need, what's the next step that we could do against him, because I'm tired of that situation. I'm tired that if I tell, I tell my kids, lower your music, because I don't want the police to come, and then tell us that to lower down the volume, even though it's not even high. It got to the point that he, he is asking the police officers either to arrest us or to give us a ticket, since we already know, we've already been warned so many times. We can't do our daily, our daily lives, because he does, everything that we do bugs him. So, in my situation, I need, I need a solution with this man, because, obviously, I'm just not safe with my kids anymore right there with him. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let me redirect that real quick to the Police Department. I think it's more of a referencing the Police Department. So, Lieutenant Kuberry in the back will assist you, okay? Those from Nolina.
Ma'am, for the record, can I have your name, please?
Yes.
Arizona Ramos.
Thank you.
Is everyone here from Nolina?
Yes. Hi.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Eva Rodriguez, and I'm also here from Nolina Street. There's, the majority of our street is here. As you can see, we filled up your room today. This neighbor has been harassing us, has caused stress. He's invaded our privacy, because he walks up and down the street, videotapes us, takes pictures. We can't even hear music or speak, speak, or have a party at our home, because he'll call the cops right away on us. And the majority of the neighbors that we live there, we've been living there for over thirty years, we have been members of that community in that area. So, to us, it's like, this is a new person that has come in. What right does he have to come and rule over all of us? And there's been times when we've called the cops, and the cops don't show up that quickly like they do for him. My sons are both musicians. It's gotten to the point where, and they're in college, they have to practice their instruments. They can't even practice, because he'll call the cops. He's ruining their college careers because of this. So, like my neighbor said, we're all here today, all the street, we're all here, we're backing each other up, because we're tired. And we want a solution for this problem that this neighbor is causing us. I don't know if he maybe knows one of you board members, and that's why he feels that he has power over the whole street. I don't know that, but we do want a solution to this.
All right. You'll gather up with the lieutenant back there, Kuberry, and you'll meet up with everyone. So, did you want to take them up? Okay. Thank you. Is this the Nolina Alpha Puente?
No. Sorry.
Oh, got it. Got it. Got it. I know where it's at. All right. Thank you.
It's actually a fourth and block.
Yeah. You know what? Go ahead and go right out with the, so, and also, Kuberry, we could follow up with the report after as well, once they all meet up with the residents there. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wow. That's definitely, yeah. I know.
There are people that they're a nuisance.
It's hard to get two or three people out.
I know.
Good afternoon, City Council.
Good afternoon, sir.
My name is Gilbert Pavia.
Yes, sir.
I'm a little bit under, so I'm a little bit slow today. Anyway, on Agenda Number Four coming up.
Yes.
Which is the puzzle to, you know, the street lighting and all this stuff that we're doing is great. Anyway, on Agenda Four, last three or four months, we've had power audages in Baldwin Park where people were told, and on one street, don't park here, we're gonna kill the three lines. Okay? They killed the three lines. In the meantime, happened to you, Alejandra, last week? Happened to me twice or three times, happened to a liquor store on Mercedes, where they lost all their food. What happens is Edison contracted out to Simon or to elsewhere. They, in turn, Simon comes in, they, they wanna work on it. Edison will kill the power, the one guy standing by, he'll kill the power, but then, it's not good enough, kill the other, kill the, pretty soon, they kill the whole grid. The whole grid goes down, Ramona goes down, all the way to Fraser. And the people are never told about it. It's been hot days, people are seizures, they're sick. This is going on, on for all summer. I'm tired of it. I'm sick now. It's my turn. I've talked to Rodriguez, I've talked to the chief's, in location, I don't know where he's at. Public services is not here. Nobody's here to talk to. Nobody knows nothing about it. You don't know nothing about it, or if you do, it was transferred to somebody else. Baca, I've talked to you about it. I know you helped out, you're following through. I wanna set up a committee where a disaster, let's call it a disaster, whether it's one street or two streets, it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen again, it happened three times. I wanna set up a committee somewhere between everybody in the committee, set up a neighborhood, a church, I don't care who they are. Anybody go check and knock on doors, help people when this happens. The grid system will go down. It's gonna happen now, earthquake, it can happen anytime.
That's true.
So, right now, I, we need help. The community needs help. We need transparency, we gotta have meetings of when it's gonna happen, who is gonna affect, and Edison should reimburse all them people. They should reimburse them for all the food they lost. They said two hours, they lied to us. My man, Edison said two hours, three hours at most. That's what they figured, but the contractor said, no, OSHA controls it. What I say, you put it out, you put it out. All right, you heard my people. Went out to ten hours last time, right? Ten hours, lies are off. That before, ten hours again.
From eight to five, it was out.
It came out at five, yeah. It went off at eight.
Yours?
It went off at eight in the morning.
Yes. From eight in the morning to five in the afternoon, it went out.
Yeah. Five in the afternoon, yeah. Ten hours, almost ten hours. So, they said two hours. Edison lied to us, because Edison has an agenda, two hours. Contractor has a different agenda, because they're subcontractors. And the grid system, if anybody knows how it works, the grid system is a computer, it works all over. When you kill the grid system, everything, everybody's out.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So, we could have Public Works hook up with them through Edison. I know that Danny keeps us informed as well, but, all right.
If I can add something about that, there was a notice sent out. I don't know if there were different notices, depending on the street that you lived on. My notice actually said from eight to four, they went over one hour. Both times, they were extended an hour extra, but they, maybe his notice was different. I don't know. They need to make sure that all the notices are the same, if they are gonna be out.
Yes. Exactly. I hear. Thank you for sharing that. All right. Thank you, Christina, our librarian.
Mayor, real fast, I'm sorry, Christina.
Yes.
Shannon, because I was in the loop of the emails, and I know that Shannon was talking with Officer Rodriguez, as well as people from SCE and so forth, and trying to resolve this, so it doesn't happen again.
It seems to be constant in the city. All right. Thank you very much for sharing that. All right. Thank you, Christina.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, residents of Baldwin Park. My name is Christine Helarios. I'm the library manager. I wanted to give you some information regarding our library and remind everybody, tomorrow, all county, LA County libraries, including our library, will be closed for staff training. And I want to also let you know that LA County Library has partnered with Metro, and Baldwin Park Library is one of the locations where we are now selling tap cards. You can get a new tap card for two dollars, and you can also load existing tap cards. I also wanted to invite the community to join us on Saturday, August 25th, from three to four, for a popoteo art workshop. And popoteo, for those that don't know, are, it's painting with colored straws. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Christina. Thank you for bringing the famous Dodger, Ken Landrell, yesterday, and I know that council member Cruz Baca was there Saturday, so.
I made slime.
Slime, that's what I heard.
You know, his father was my teacher in high school. Mr. Landrell was my teacher in high school.
He was? Let me just, excellent individual. Excellent. I mean, what a, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you all for supporting the library, and it's great that all these young kids can see you coming to our library. I've seen all of you in there from time to time, so thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Move along with public communication.
I'd like to know where the hundred and ten thousand dollars from the weed guys are supposed to be in on July 1st. City hasn't seen that. I haven't seen any decisions made by the council on wavering that or anything else. So, I think we need to follow up with the contracts. You guys made contracts with these people, they need to follow it, or there's gonna be penalties paid. This thing has really turned into a disaster, and you have the city budget all relying on getting this big money that you're not getting. Now then, I want to move over to the towing contract. You have one of the towing people there, Royal Coaches, that has numerous code violations. They illegally built buildings back behind their office years ago with no permits or anything else. They built the wall, then they built up higher, then they built the roof over. They also are operating their body shop under one license, but it's two businesses. One's a smog shop, one's a body shop, which is illegal. Also, numerous complaints of stealing stuff out of the cars. So, they have a lot of problems and issues with the people here in the city. Also, the illegal parking of their tow trucks backwards on the street, which I've complained to the chief and everybody, the police department, numerous times. Also, with the violations of the, people want to have a choice in towing. They don't want to be stuck with one tow company. They would like to have a choice, and I think that would be the smartest thing for this city to do, instead of only taking all these big donations from Royal Coaches. Monica got five thousand dollars, and Manny did the last mayor's election. So, everybody got paid off, and Pacheco gets money for the church and for his own stuff and his wife. So, we need to stop the payoffs, and we need to start doing this the right way for the people, not for your pocketbooks for election. Also, the bonds. Do you understand, and when you get these bonds, that you're to have an independent audit committee, not the council, to do the audit? So, you need to check into the laws, because you guys are in serious trouble with the Securities and Exchange Commission, which we've turned you into. You also need to understand that this bond money that you're getting for the fifty-five million dollars that you owe, because you didn't pay it. You robbed Peter to pay Paul. You have a twenty-two million dollar deficit that you show the successor agency owe you. I have no clue on how the successor agency owes the city twenty-two million dollars. I certainly hope there isn't fraud on filing these forms.
Mr. Tuttell, you have three minutes to wrap.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Pretty quick. All right. Thank you, Mr. Tuttell. I move along with public communication. All right. Seeing no further public communication, I'd like to declare it a close. So, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and consent calendar, council members wishing to pull any items.
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz Baca.
I would like to pull four, eight, nine, ten, and thirteen.
Hold on. So, that's four, eight, nine.
Ten.
Ten.
And thirteen.
And can we pull twelve as well?
And twelve. Okay. My councilmember Susan Rubio. All right. At this point, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to pass consent calendar with the exception of four, eight, nine, ten, twelve, and fourteen. That is my motion.
No, thirteen.
And thirteen. Excuse me.
That's right.
Thirteen, okay. All righty. Thirteen and fourteen, right?
No.
Oh, fourteen, okay. Got it. All right. So, this, let me just repeat. So, it's item four, eight, nine, ten, twelve, and thirteen.
Correct.
All right. That is my motion. Baca? Any objections? See, not so move. All right. So, at this point, we'll move to the first one, which is negotiate and award of the contract for traffic signal and street lighting maintenance. So, that, yes, Cruz Baca?
I have a question, and I think this is for Sam, I believe. It reads in the contract that if, for some reason, the company does not fulfill their obligation, that it will be given to someone else to finish. Will they be reimbursing us for, for the work that they didn't complete, or how is that going to work?
Oh, no. The staff report is asking for authorization to negotiate rates with a new firm, and if we don't reach an agreement with rates that are favorable to the city, then we're asking for the council to allow us to negotiate with the next low, with the next.
Oh, I see. All right. I understood that if they did, that if we went with the company and they did not meet the deadline of fulfilling, you know, the work, that we could go with the next company in line, in other words, for the bid.
Right. So, yeah, this is to negotiate favorable rates for the city, for the traffic maintenance. So, we are asking that we, council allows to negotiate with the top-rated firm, which is the higher-cost firm, but if we can't reach favorable terms with them, then we will negotiate with the next top-ranked firm.
Okay, I make a motion that we pass item number four.
All right, there's a motion by council member Cruz Baca, that's our second, by vice mayor Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? See, none, so move. All right, so, we'll go over to item eight, requested by council member Cruz Baca, which reads authorization to initiate a Measure M project bonding for rail safety improvements, quiet zone ready, at the Pacific Avenue, McDevitt Street, Merced Avenue, and Foster Avenue rail crossing. Council member Cruz Baca?
Yes, this is my question, and I guess it's either you, Sam, or Shannon. From what I believe, from us trying to do a quiet zones, there are seven crossings, correct? Okay, so, there's six, because the one at Pacific and/or Bogart and Pacific on Ramona by the train station, that's already been taken... Well, that's not a quiet zone. That was just ADA compliant, right?
No, the improvements that Metrolink did at the crossing of Ramona and the rail is quiet zone ready. So, those improvements do qualify for quiet zone readiness.
You have to have a corridor and a number in a row?
Right.
And I think is it at least almost a mile, is it half a mile?
Yes.
And once we complete all of those, then we can apply for the quiet zone for the entire corridor. So, we can't yet apply for just the quiet zone on one crossing.
Okay. Yes, that was my, that was my question. What is, is, are all the crossings going to be included? Because I only saw McDevitt, and I'm trying to see, remember some of the streets that we're on here. What concerns me is that there are some of the schools near Merced and so forth, which are very... I get complaints all the time from not only the residents, but the children in the schools.
Right. So, the next consecutive crossings that we're going to improve are Merced, McDevitt, and Foster, all near schools. And also, we're going to be doing on a separate project, the Pacific Avenue crossing.
Okay. All right, thank you. I make a motion that we pass. It's very important that we move forward with these quiet zones. Item number eight, which is authorization to initiate Measure M project bonding for rail safety improvements, quiet zone ready, at the Pacific Avenue, McDevitt, Merced, and Foster Avenue rail crossings.
All right, so, seconded by council member Cruz, Susan Rubio.
Any objections? See, none, so move. Okay, item nine, which is by council member Cruz Baca, accept plans and specifications and authorized publishing of the notice inviting bids for CIP number 19-2121, city project. So, at this point, Brooks Drive and Spring Street construction. Council member Cruz Baca?
Yes, could you please explain, because you're, the report, it really didn't clarify to me what was going to be done, especially like on Brooks and Spring Street?
Sure. So, along Brooks and Spring Streets, and this is a condition that's been, for a while, it's been an issue, and there are large pine trees all around that area, it's a commercial area. Those pine trees have, the roots of the pine trees have lifted the street adjacent to the trees. The roots have lifted the street and the curving gutter. So, this project is to do a reconstruction, or a partial reconstruction of the street that will restore and repair the curving gutter, restoring the flow of water to the storm drain, and to restore the street. In some cases, the street is lifted over two feet. It is, it is an issue that needs to be addressed, and we're gonna be using SB1 funds to do that repair work.
All right, now, will you be looking, because I know that there's other streets throughout the city that have that problem, where the, where the roots of the trees have lifted the sidewalk and so forth? Because I get called sometimes about somebody that tripped, or whatever it is, especially people that are walking at night now. So, are you going to be looking at other streets that need that type of repair as well?
Absolutely. We are working right now on our CIP program for next year. In that program, we have projects, and we're trying to set them out on an annual basis, but we have projects that are specifically for making these types of repairs.
Okay. I, thank you. I make a motion to pass item number nine.
All right, there's a motion, seconded by vice mayor Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? See, none, so move. At this point, item number 10, which is accept plans and specifications and authorized publishing of the notice inviting bid for CPI 19-27, and that's a Fraser Street pedestrian and bicycle improvement project. Council member Cruz Baca?
Yes, I have, hasn't this been done before? Are we repeating ourselves here with some of these safe routes and so forth?
So, we did have a safe routes project specifically to do curb bobouts and extensions. This project in particular will add bike lanes to Fraser Avenue from the 10 freeway to Sierra Vista High School. So, it is in the same spirit of the, of these other projects, which is to improve safety along streets and routes that lead to schools, especially elementary schools and high schools.
Okay. I make a motion to pass item number 10. Thank you, Sam.
I have a really quick question, if you don't mind.
Hold on, hold on one moment. So, was seconded by council member Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? See, none, so move. At this point, council member Susan Rubio?
No, I just want to, I mean, we're talking about, you know, the bobouts and everything. I'm sure we probably heard it before. What is the estimated date of completion for Main? I'm getting a lot of complaints, a lot of concern, and I don't have a definitive answer. Can you tell me when I can express to the neighbors when that project's gonna be completed?
Sure. So, officially, the completion date is during the first or second week of October. We are ahead of schedule, and we have been making changes to the project and accelerating some issues so that we can meet the Open Streets event project. So, we want to be substantially complete by September 16.
Okay. So, it's safe to tell the neighbors September 16, right?
Yes.
Because I don't want them yelling after, give them a date.
You are welcome to give them my phone number and...
I'm just a little curious, because I, you know, we all drive through there, and we're getting so many complaints. What, how about the residents? You know, I'm not impacted because I'm not on the main street, but how are the residents handling that? I know that they do a good job of putting either wood across some of the entryways to the homes, but are we getting any complaints from the actual neighbors that live on that street?
Well, I like, I like to say that from a general perspective, things are going very well. The residents understand that it's a construction. We have had, received some complaints, particularly with the businesses. But as far as the, the work has been done directly adjacent to a particular property, we've been engaging with the residents and letting them know what we plan to do and how long we're taking. And for the most part, that's been working very well.
Okay. Thank you for that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
However, excuse me, Mayor?
Go ahead, that's fine.
We did have a glitch with, with an incident that I reported. So, some of, I, I'm glad to see that some of the metal plates have been arranged a little better for the businesses not to lose business for their entrances or whatever. I don't see as many cars parked on Main like there were before when it first started, and I would call and say, this is an accident waiting to happen. The sooner we can expedite this, because there are a lot of people that are very unhappy. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, member Cruz Baca. At this point, we'll go to item 12, requested by council member Susan Rubio, authorization to adopt resolution number 2018-285, entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park's Affirming STV/OCO Guiding Principles on Homeless Programs." So, yes, council member?
Thank you, Mayor. I, well, I know we've been doing a lot of work on this issue, but in particular, because I know that council member Cruz Baca is on the ad hoc committee. If, I wanted to ask council member Cruz Baca if you can share a little bit of some of the items that you guys are working on right now, just for our benefit and the public's benefit. What are some of the major collaborations? I know that it's 20 cities across LA County. What are some of the major collaborations that you guys are working on?
Well, some of the collaborations is that I think, and I know that CEO Shannon attended the summit, and I'm not sure if some of our police officers, but I know our staff did. Manny Carrillo did, which was very informative, because it showed that within our city, we need to collaborate with the different departments, because it affects all of us, whether it's the safety through our police department, or whether it's some of our parks and rec, and some of our church organizations that deal on a daily basis with handing out or letting people know what the resources are that they can go to. But the main thing that we found in talking to Mayor Johnson, Lloyd Johnson from West Covina, and some of the other neighboring cities, is that we need to work together as well, because this is a joint effort that we see a lot of the transients, depending on where the resources are, the transients are going to be going to that particular city. So, we do share them. Not only do they have encampments in our cities, but they do travel from city to city. I know that the city of Irwindale and Duarte have joined forces because of their riverbed. It was very important for them to work together to try to clean that up and to work with that. But it's also being able to train our police officers and so forth, because there are a lot of issues in dealing with some of, moving some of the belongings. When someone is either arrested, or someone gets sick, what to do with those particular belongings, because it is a violation of their civil rights if some of that is moved without their authority, especially when it comes to having medication. So, we are working on that right now. Supervisor Solis and supervisor Kuhl are working on giving us another $3 million. So far, they gave us the news that instead of the $9 million, we were gonna get $6 million, and $3 million is coming from LASSA, which is the housing, homeless housing authority. But we are all pushing, and thank you, Shannon, for that great letter that you wrote to the supervisors to sort of put some fire under them and say, we need all the resources we can possibly get. This is not something that we're going to be able to do easily. So, that's it in a nutshell.
All right.
Thank you for the brief.
Thank you very much for the information.
With that, I'll make a motion to pass this item. Thank you, Mayor.
Seconded by council member Cruz Baca. Any objections? See, none, so move. At this point, item 13, which is the pension obligation bond. So, at this point, council member Cruz Baca?
Yes, Rose, could you please explain that to us? Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. I'm very happy to discuss these items tonight. And previously, we've been, received approval from the city council to go out to look for options and bonds to pay down the unfunded pension liabilities and fire away to, for future savings. And we've been working with the financing team who assisted the city issue the successor agency bonds. Suzanne Harold is here tonight. And tonight, we bring back the options to the city council and to get direction and approval. And I want to talk about the physical impact. By issuing the pension obligation bonds to fund the unfunded liability and exchanges one obligation which currently CalPERS has, and to another at a lower interest rate, which we are taking the advantage of the low interest rate from the market. And by doing this, and the financial benefit to the city is anticipated to be $22.2 million in savings over the bond lifetime. And also, we want to recommend the underwriting service, which is the finance, the financial advisor has go down, I mean, has went out to search for three firms, underwriting firms, who has issued, assist the city government or other agency issue the POB bonds. And we found, we found Ramirez and Kam is the, I mean, provided the lowest rate, and Carmen is the representative, representative from that firm, and she's also here tonight. And if you all have any question, feel free to ask Suzanne and Carmen.
Thank you, Rose. I have a question.
Yes.
How long is the bond for?
It's about 26 years.
How will that impact us? I know that there's a huge saving, but how will that impact the city having another bond? I know that we still have some bonds that are still outstanding.
Actually, we pay off the POB bond already in this June. That POB bond is for safety plan only, but this bond is for both the miscellaneous plan and the safety, which is CTY and cover the whole CTY for all employees who's under the retirement system.
For the retirement system, okay. Is there a, is there an advisory board or someone that, that oversees how this money is spent and how it's used?
Yes. Suzanne Harold can explain more in this area.
Okay. Thank you.
We form a trustee, and all those will overlook that bond.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the city council. So, when these bonds are issued, the money will be directly sent to PERS to, in a lump sum, to pay off your existing unfunded actuarial liability. And then they, PERS in turn, sends you an indication that you no longer owe them any future payments for the existing unfunded liabilities. So, there is no particular oversight of, oversight of the city's action, or, you know, subsequent actions after the bonds are issued.
Will we be able to keep up with our obligation payments from this point on after we pay the back payments? Or is it something where we're still going to be in the hole even though we've got this bond for 26 years?
Right. So, the bond issue will pay off your existing obligations, which also have a payment stream over about 26 years. And so, that's where the potential for the savings comes in, because we're actually trying to reduce your annual payments compared to what you would have paid to PERS. So, there's going to be some savings there. Every year, PERS has investment experience, so they either have gains or losses on their portfolio, that they'll create new obligations for the city to fund if they, if their portfolio, you know, is, doesn't earn the required discount rate, or you, or they change their assumptions in terms of what their required investment rate is, or if you change your benefits. And so, there is a potential for future layers or amortization basis to be added based on PERS experience in the future. However, the big changes, we feel have already kind of been taken into account in the amount that you're paying off. There's one more big change that you'll see. They do give you a 20-year repayment period for that, though.
I have a question, if I may. You know, I recognize there's, there's a savings, that's exactly what we're doing, the bond. Is there a way that we can designate that savings that go directly to future liabilities? So, it's almost taking that savings straight into the account, and that kind of fulfills, I think, what council member Cruz Baca is asking, because that's gonna be paying whatever future liability we're gonna have. What are we doing with the savings? Can we put it directly back into PERS?
Actually, we can use the saving and put the saving set aside and to create a trust account with CalPERS. So, we can use that money to meet a future rainy day, or we can use that to pay down the OPEB unfunded liability. The OPEB side is for, example, is for the health insurance or health premium we pay every year to our retirees.
So, essentially, that's gonna minimize what we put out yearly, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, like the insurance and everything else, so then our liability is gonna go down in the future. Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's our next plan to bring it back to the city council regarding setting up the OPEB trust account.
Okay. That was my, that's another one of my questions, is that how much is owed on that?
It's about 40, I mean, 40 million.
Okay. So, we're going to pay one off, of course, and have a saving of 22 million?
Yes.
But we're still in the hole for 40 million, correct?
It's, um, not actually in the hole, it's like a projection the city has been doing. We pay as we go. We, is, CalPERS culturally estimate based on our number of retirees, and they issue that amount.
Right, but the OPEB, if I remember correctly, years ago, some of our employees that retired get lifetime insurance, right? Lifetime benefits?
Yes.
Okay. That, I just need those questions clarified, or I need those, that clarified, so that I can make sense of it and understand what's going to be happening with a lot of the monies that's still outstanding and it's unfunded. So, so that that way we can prepare for it, or are we gonna be looking at another bond in another two or three years to pay off the OPEB, and we're back to square one? So, I'm hoping that we can, that we can fix this.
So, yeah, you're right, and the savings, so we do have the additional debt that is the OPEB due to...
And the savings, so we do have the additional debt that is the OPEB due to future retirement. But what we'll be bringing back to you after this is settled is the 115 trust account, where we can take the savings of this and invest it in that 115 trust account, which is basically setting aside the money for the retirement OPEB, because right now, the retirement OPEB is 0% funded. And we'd like to see it at 60 to 80% funded.
Okay. Now, let me ask your question, because I don't, I don't know. Is there any way that this monies could be used for something else if it's put in the trust? Could it be used for something else other than funding the OPEB?
This money can only use for CalPERS-related costs. You cannot use to fix the street or other things.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make, I'll make a motion that we pass. I'm sorry, I just needed to, in my head, I needed to work on this out.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we pass item 13.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Mayor, I also want to mention that this is no different than what other cities are facing, and the decisions that other cities are having to make. So it's not unique to the City of Baldwin Park, and it's something that we've been talking about for years, you know, how we're going to pay down that unfunded liability. So this makes so much sense to me, because, you know, of that savings, and I know we have had the plans to pay down the OPEB and the unfunded liability, and so this puts us in a better position to do that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. So this one, there was a motion by Councilmember Cruz Baca, seconded by Councilmember Monica Garcia. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. All right. So at this point, we're going to go on to the next part of the agenda, where we have, we have the successor, successor agency to dissolve Community Development Commission of the City Baldwin Parks Warrants and Demands. So we just needed a motion for that, right? I'm going to make a motion to adopt. Oh, Consent Calendar, S.A. 1.
Assistant Agency.
Yes. Successor Agency to Dissolve Community Development Commission for the City, for the City Baldwin Parks Warrants and Demands. So that's my motion.
Second.
Any objections? Seeing none, so move. All right. The next one is the Reports of Officers, item 14, which is approval and direction to proceed with professional service agreements for transit services. All right. So at this point, councilmembers have any questions?
No. I'd like to make a motion to continue to approve a two-year contract extension for Southland Transit.
I would second that motion.
Okay. Second. At this point, any objections? No objections? Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I, go ahead and finish this item.
Okay. All right. So at this point, there was a motion by Councilmember, Councilmember Cruz Baca. The motion is for the, what did you say for the?
It's number one, to approve a two-year contract extension to Southland Transit, Inc., STI, at the current rate.
And it was seconded by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Looking forward. All right. So at this point, we're going to go down to the next.
Mayor, before we move on, I'd like to ask that STI provide regular communications to us, just to avoid any, you know, challenges as we've experienced in the past, so.
Make a brief. Come on up. Yes. Thank you. Thank you for being here, by the way.
Thank you for having me. Jason Snow, Vice President, Southland Transit. This is actually one thing that we've been talking about with, with staff over the past few meetings, is, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little hoarse, following up on the discussion of a transit summit, we would like to use that as a segue to doing some route analysis, community outreach, to see if we can find ways to better reallocate existing services, not adding, not cutting, to better accommodate some of the seniors who are currently using Dalaride that might be better, might find more convenience using the fixed route system. So we've made that commitment with staff. And in addition, I'd be happy to come back on a more regular basis and make updates to the City Council.
Great. Yes. I think it would be great to hear from you on a more regular basis, at least, you know, like a quarterly basis, so, thank you.
Mayor. Yes, Councilmember Ricardo.
And I would just ask that you improve your community relations, get out there more, hear the concerns of the constituents. You talk to us as a City Council, you know, good news or bad news, and we want to see how you're handling out there, working with our constituents, and we want to get, you know, right away, when we ask you about the community that, and the issues they're having, that you resolve them right away.
Certainly. We'll focus our efforts in that regard.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I would just like to add that, you know, that I, I think that the last meeting, my suggestion was for you to send a representative or yourself to our senior center. That's where we hear a lot of the complaints, or, and clarify also, because sometimes they'll be talking about a bus, but it's not really even Southland Transit. It's either Foothill Transit or some other bus that they're talking about. So I think that keeping a good communication with, especially our seniors at the community center, because they're the ones that really use your, your transportation, and I think that would really help in order for them to know that they can go to you or go to some representative and get their problems resolved. Thank you.
I agree, and we will definitely approach it with that in mind. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we forgot to mention on item 13 that we are required to have a roll call vote on that.
All right. So what we'll do back, the pension obligation bond, which was actually moved by Councilmember Cruz Baca, and also seconded, I believe, with Monica Garcia, Councilmember Garcia. So at this point, we're going to go ahead and do roll call. So, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Baca?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Thank you very much. Alejandro Avila, the vote is 5-0. All right. So at this point, thank you very much. All right. So at this point, we're going to go over to the direction, item 15, direction and approval of an official police tow service franchise. So staff recommends that the City Council direct staff to proceed with one of the following options for the official police tow service franchise. All right. So the options, one, which is accept the proposal for roll coaches, auto body, and towing, authorize the mayor to execute a franchise agreement for official police tow service, roll coaches, auto body, and towing. Option two, accept the proposal for hadley tow, and authorize the mayor to execute the franchise, okay? And option three, accept the proposal for roll coaches, auto body, towing, and hadleys tow, authorize the mayor to execute. This point, I'm going to make a motion for option one, which is accept the proposal for roll coaches, auto body, and towing, and authorize, authorize the mayor to execute a franchise agreement for official police tow service, roll coaches, auto body. That's for 10 years. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Second, yes.
I'm going to do a substitute motion to go for option three, to accept the proposals for roll coaches, auto, and towing, and hadley tow, and authorize the mayor to execute a franchise agreement with both.
All right. So there's a, there's a substitute motion?
I will second that, but I, I want to go back to the original four years versus the 10 that was proposed, four years, as it always has been.
And also, I would like for it to be in a rotating, for the police department to rotate like other cities do between the two towing companies.
All right. So there's, there's a substitute motion currently by Councilmember Cruz Baca. It was seconded by Councilmember Susan Rubio, who requested the four-year rotation, four year contract and rotation by Councilmember Cruz Baca. So I'll object.
Mayor, just for clarification, all these substitute motions out there.
Yes.
So when she made a substitute motion for the attorney?
For option three.
Can you clarify what that motion is?
Option three, let me read. Option three, accept the proposal for roll coaches, auto body, and towing, and hadley tow, and authorize, combine both of them.
The four-year.
Okay. So as a part of that substitute motion, there was a four-year?
Four-year.
And what else?
Four-year, four-year rotation, and that they're rotating.
Rotating between the two companies.
And I objected.
Okay. And that's all under your substitute motion?
Yes, it is.
That's what you're saying?
Thank you.
Okay. And the mayor objected, it was made, may I second? Okay, so go ahead.
At this point, we'll do a roll call? Okay. All right. So at this point, right now, it's for the substitute motion that we consider option number three, which is accept the proposal for roll coaches, auto body, and towing, hadley tow as well. So that's the motion at this point?
I think by Rubio.
Yes, that is correct.
Councilmember Baca?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Lozano?
No.
No.
Yes.
All right. So at this point, the motion passes 3-2. So at this point, it's option number three for both of the towing services.
Just one, I would like to ask to make sure that we clarified to add the four-year contract, and also that it will be rotated, they will be rotating according to the police department.
All right. So at this point, so is that clear? We could bring that, I guess you want that to be amended? Like, correct?
I think it needs to be amended. I think it would be a part of.
Yeah. Okay. All righty. Okay.
But I do think, Mayor, there's going to need to be changes to the agreements now. We have the agreements, but they were very different from what this is.
I'd like to.
So, so we're going to have to bring it back, okay? All righty. That's fine.
No, no, no. The amendment is fine with the, with the added language or the change of language. That'll be fine.
They're going to have to bring it back. All right. So at this point, we're going to go ahead and move on over to the pride platoon, I believe is requested by Councilmember Cruz, Susan Rubio.
Yes, this is something that, you know, we've had for many, many years, and I'm so glad that it started back again. But I want to talk about the schedule, because before, we used to have two going on. I believe one was in the spring, and one was at the start of, of the school year. And so I, first, can someone from the police department tell me when, when they have it? Can anybody clarify when they have the pride platoon classes?
Yes, ma'am. Do you hear me?
Now we can.
Yeah, we, as you, as you mentioned, we had a successful graduation of Class 24 in June. We had an issue where, we had a staffing issue, and we're having a hard time getting the personnel to put on the pride platoon. As you know, it's very time-consuming and takes a lot of man-hours. Our plan now is for the next one. It's all fluid. We're shooting for next February, this coming February, for the next one, but we're open to suggestions and see what we do. I don't know, I'd have to obviously speak to the chief and speak to staff and see if we can up the tempo and have two a year. I don't know if we're there yet, but for sure, we can at least get the one done in February, hopefully.
Well, I know it was very successful, and I've heard a lot of great reviews over it, and, but I know that traditionally, for the past 15 years or so, 20 years, we used to have two a year, so, you know, you know, we did it for 15 years, so I think that we can figure out how to do it. I know that, I was talking to some of the children that benefited, and they were, parents were really happy, and I was able to speak to some of the police officers, and they were very confident in their program. So, you know, I want to see if we can do it twice a year, because that's, parents sort of came to expect that, and now they're asking for it. And so I just want to go back to the original program, which was one at the beginning of the year, one at the end of the year, we can do that. Thank you.
Okay.
And, and you know, and I also, and I was at the graduation, so I, I know what success that has, especially right now with a lot of parents and a lot of schoolteachers saying that they, that they, they need a program like that to keep some of the kids off the street, especially some of the children, or some of the kids that are leaning more towards at-risk. And I think that if we could figure out, probably doing something in the fall, and then, of course, the, the original one that you started with in the spring, I guess, early summer, or whatever that graduation is, I think that that would also help with, because I know that there's a lot of, there's a lot of parents that ask, "What is there for my kid to do so that I can, they don't listen to me? Is there somewhere where they could go so that they can, so that they can, someone could put them on the right track?" So I think it's been very successful. I've never heard anything negative. I've been attending the graduations for a long time, since before I was a councilmember,